First, I don't care about all these topics because last time when I went to the city council meeting and I gave them like a paper, since they only give you one minute to speak, I gave them a paper explaining that I have the solutions for all these problems, but they never contacted me by email or phone, so they don't care about this, but have the solution to end homelessness for good within three years. So like to get contacted with my number, as I said, 213-910-3040. Thank you.
Thank you very much, moderator. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Sylvia Corona. You may begin.
Yes.
Our speaker? Do we have a speaker there, moderator?
Sylvia, your line is open. Please go ahead.
Okay, can we move on to our next speaker?
Our next participant is Genevieve Plavaro. Please go ahead.
Yes, good morning. I'm very glad to see you. It's time that you really look what we're now with the homeless in LA. Is it now getting worse? It's very obvious that LSA is not doing a good job that we have and we're wasting a lot of the money. So I totally approve and support that motion. There are people who can make a change and can clean out the LSA and some people who are here care about the homeless. Bye bye.
Thank you, Genevieve. Okay, may we have our next speaker, please?
Our next participant is Allison Scheller. You may begin. Looks like Allison dropped. Our next participant is Cory Gaff. You may begin. Cory, your line is open. You may begin.
Good morning. I am opposing the cell tower in Stevenson Ranch.
Just a second. We're having a really hard time hearing you. Can you speak closer into your phone?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Sorry about that. I'm calling in to oppose the cell tower in Stevenson Ranch.
Oh, that's not, you know what? That's not this item. That will be under general public comment, I believe. So that's later in the meeting. This is about the declaring an emergency for the homelessness crisis. So we'll get you later.
Oh.
Yeah.
So I just stay on hold then?
She stays on hold the whole time? Okay, stay on hold.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Mark Macarian. You may begin.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mark Macarian. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mark Macarian and I am with SICMORS. I am the Youth Regional Coordinator for Service Area Three. SICMORS is the lead agency for the Youth Coordinated Entry System, which is LSA's housing and homeless services management system. I do want to thank Supervisor Solis for her motion to encourage volunteers for the youth homelessness count. The youth count presents its own difficulties compared to the adult count because most of our youth are really savvy on being the invisible homeless.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I think, I think you're wanting to speak on item 10. So we're on item three.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, I won't beat myself.
Yeah, we'll get you later.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker on item three. Declaring a state of emergency.
Apologies. Our next participant is Eric Previn. You may begin.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn on item number three. And, you know, I think that this declaration of an emergency has been, you know, hard for me to handle because I know we had one for the pandemic and as soon as the ink dried on that one, we started a new one. But we definitely have a crisis and somebody talked about when there's a fire, so, you know, we put people up and we find the vouchers. So this is very important. The problem, of course, is we're waiving all the, suspending all the rules and things, as Davenport points out. But, you know, let me be frank, we need a hiring blitz. And how is anybody going to be hired unless we pay way through the roof if we're competing against the private sector? So no blaming, no more pointing fingers. As somebody said, we're doing everything we can, but we have to be more nimble. And I would suggest that for CES, this is very important, they need to move much faster. And we need to be sure that CES, the people, the team over at CES have access to urgent mental health care because this has been going very badly for almost a decade. And it's just, it's just, you know, that's why I'm so proud of Horvath for saying, I'll tell you who I'm appointing to LSA.
Thank you.
She's got to go in there.
Thank you.
She's going in herself. Well done.
Thank you. We're proud of her, too. Okay, moderator, next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Genesis Coronado. You may begin.
Hi, good morning, Honorable Board of Supervisors. On behalf of the Los Angeles Near Side School District, I would like to express support for the proclamation of local emergency for homelessness in LA County. Throughout the school year, our district serves over 10,000 students who have self-identified experiencing homelessness. However, we know the actual number is much higher. We request that the county leverage its existing resources to better support unhealed student population. Furthermore, to ensure students, their families, and school staff safe passages when entering school campuses, we also urge the county prioritize supports for unsheltered individuals who are residing near school campuses. Los Angeles Near Side views this emergency proclamation as an opportunity to streamline and fast-track support and much-needed services delivery to unhealed students, families, and our unhealed neighbors. We also welcome strengthening our existing collaboration with the county of Los Angeles to address this crisis. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Michael Patty. Please go ahead.
Sir, I'm on item 59, the Stevenson Ranch Shell Tower. I got hung up and then came back into the queue.
No, that's the wrong, that's not the, excuse me, we're on item three.
I know. I didn't, I registered for item 59. My name must have got in there by mistake.
Okay, all right. Well, hang on until we get to.
I apologize. I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, hang on for 59 later in the meeting. All right, next speaker, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next participant is Adam Cohen. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Adam Cohen. I also was not scheduled for item number three. I'd like to be put back on.
Okay, no problem. We're not pointing fingers in this meeting. No blame. We're linking arms. Okay, next speaker on three. Declaring a state of emergency in LA County. Moderator.
Our next participant is Sophia Kiones. You may begin.
Sophia? Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Katrina Williams. You may begin.
Hi. First before I even start, I just want to thank Ms. Holly Mitchell, County Supervisor Holly Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell, I just want to say thank you so much for supporting our program. I was cut off earlier because I really do this work for real. I tell the community, I'm also a caseworker. I tell my clients that I walk with God 24/7, 365, Holy Ghost style, that is. And when we come out in the streets, we come out to take people off the streets to bring them back to life. We bring healing with housing. And I was calling to talk about working together and bridging the gap. See, Ms. Holly Mitchell's office, Ms. Hilda Solis' office, they came to our annual breakthrough that we hold on ski rope every year in Austin. And we block, we close ski rope down, we get a permit, we close it down, and we bring R&B, hip-hop, gospel music. We bring the music that heals the soul to the community and we edify them. Because when you house people that have been broken, they have to be healed first. Come on, God. See, I got hung up before, but see, when God say call that, come on, Jesus. He said, call that, and now you walk in with me. So now I'm walking in with God.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I didn't want to cut you off because you were talking about gospel music and healing and hallelujah. I was not going to cut you off.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm just.
No, no, now, now I am cutting you off.
Okay, well, thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Okay, you have a blessed day, too. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Janet Smith. You may begin.
Oh, hi. My name is actually Liz Barris. I said Janet Smith because AT and Team Nan aligns and does not call on me because I've sued over the wireless issue. I'm homeless. I want to tell you why I'm homeless. I pay $24.50 a month for my apartment, but I can't use it because the 5G upgrade makes my kidneys bleed. It gives me liver problems. I get severe migraines and vomiting. I now am homeless. I live in my car in the parking lot where I rent my apartment. I have cords coming from my apartment to my car to speak on the phone, to use hardwired Ethernet and for electric. But this is a type of homelessness that is totally preventable and is being ignored by my county representatives that I've spoken with in the past years about this. It is going on now, year three. I've been unable to occupy my own apartment due to this upgrade. I have warfare, German warfare shielding that blocks radiation. Ten layers of the shielding cannot block the 5G upgrade. It's so high frequency and high power density, it goes right through it.
Okay, it's, excuse me, it does sound like you could use some help. So can our moderator or county staff, can we capture this caller's information? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Our next participant is Allison Scheller. You may begin.
Hi, I'm Allison Scheller. I'm calling about our project Sunnyside Five, which is in Supervisor Holly Mitchell's district. Listen, we are a perfect example of why we need to pass this motion to require you and the county to move faster with urgency. We have had 15 units ready to go for providing food and shelter for unhoused college students, providing them college completion tracks, job training, mental health, and a community. If 41% of the kids are African-American and unhoused in South Central, we have 15 units that have just been sitting there for eight months waiting for permits. We have all our permits except now all of a sudden we have to get solar? This is the perfect example. We are fully funded, a community of private funding and public funding, and our 15 units are sitting there just waiting for permits.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm hoping to get a list of action items.
Thank you.
For 14 days, which could be.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to return to in-person speakers. Go ahead.
Yes, this country was founded on a lie. So what you plant, eventually it grows. My name is Carla Cunningham. I am homeless. But I feel that the only way I can receive help, I have to say that I'm schizophrenic, bipolar, or excuse expression, have been to jail or prison. My father fought for this country. I'm a military kid. The pandemic hit, I could no longer work. I was in the medical field. Please help my family. Lisa, what can you do to help me? I am a law-abide citizen, never been in any trouble with the law. So I feel that if I'm not saying I'm crazy, I've been to jail or prison, I'm not going to receive the help that I need. I am an African woman that works hard for a living. I'm honest. Help me. And I'm not leaving here till I get the help that I need.
Good. Well, thank you, because that's how we feel, you know. We don't leave here till we can get you some help. Who down there on the floor is, back in the corner, wave, wave your hand. Yeah, that's, we're going to try to get you some help. Okay, next speaker in person.
Is the mic on? My name is Nikita Walker. I'm a single parent. I'm a working parent. I have an 11-year-old son that looks at me every day in disappointment of wondering how we're going to get out the shelter. I've been in the shelter. I'm not on the streets, but I feel like I'm on the streets because I'm in a shelter that's supposed to be implementing emergency housing. I've been there since April of 2020. And it's, I'm done. I've been working. I don't feel like I have to go through mental health in order to manipulate the system. I want to know also, Sheri and Lisa, what can you do to help me and my son? While I was in the shelter, my car had got stolen. I had to walk my son to school. I was, I was helped or was told to go to Hopix. Hopix is a joke. LSA is a joke. If we can't get help, I need help.
Okay, thank you so much for coming down here. We're also going to direct you to those that are going to try to give you some help today. Okay, next speaker, please.
Okay, as a homeless service provider, this is what I've been fighting for for 10 years. No disrespect. I'm the one that submitted the Long Beach Community Hospital project with Rex Richardson. And what did you do, Janice Han? You had Lucas Clip, Paul Duncan, make sure you gave the contract to first to serve. I asked for the Blue Ribbon Commission to join on there. What did you have? Quametore, email say, we don't need you. Stop the hypocrisy. I'm out here in these streets. And you see when it's working black women that are heterosexual, we are the bottom of the barrel. You got to be a, 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 a they. You got to be part of LGBT. You got to be part of everything else to get help faster, and that's not right. I have no problem with eat any one of you, Solis, Barger, Han, Horvath, and Mitchell. I need you to respect the projects that we are putting in here. Behind the scenes, we are behind the scenes tenfold. When I apply for a contract, don't disrespect me. Don't disrespect my people because you don't know what we do. But we're out here in these streets. You are the bureaucracy that is stopping. So I'm asking for this to be a season of yes. Lisa and Sheri, I'm going to reach out to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Ella, County Board of Supervisors. I'm Donald Harland. This is, I'm asking you to deny the proclamation of emergency homelessness in Los Angeles. I think that's a problem that the county supervisors have contributed greatly to the homeless crisis. You know, all these illegal real estate developments that are approved in here are the cause of the homeless crisis. And the solution for the county supervisors to fix the problem is to build more illegal housing. I don't want LA County placing homeless people in my properties. I understand that there's a weather, it's the winter and people are dying, you're trying to help. I understand that, but I don't want them on my property. Also, Metro is private property. It doesn't belong to the LA County Board of Supervisors, doesn't belong to any government agencies. You're not to be building homeless services on Metro property. For sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You need to stop building on Metro.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
So simplify. Congress gave themselves three raises during the pandemic when the world was shut down. $600 million a year to house homelessness? Who are you kidding? Who are you kidding? Snyder versus Faupin, I'm going to quote a line, "Not blessed, just cursed." This emergency crisis is a result of decades of insult and idiocy by our local government to construed a myth that there is no homelessness in this country of California. If you read my shirt, the acronym there, you can just imagine what it means. But the issue here is when, why, and place and time. Where are you going to use the $600 million, mayor? Karen Bass, I was here, I heard it. $600 million a year? Well, you're not going to solve the problem. Because the problem is, we're a doom nation, pope in hell, and God hates you. All my documents were the record.
Your time has expired. Are there, there's no other, either on the phone or in person? Okay, this, item three is as amended, is before us. It is moved by Supervisor Horvath. It is seconded by Supervisor Barger to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item three as amended by Supervisor Mitchell and Supervisor Han is before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, let's go to work. Now, we're going to take up item seven, proclaiming January 2023 as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month in the county, which was held by you, Supervisor Barger. For members of the public who are on the telephone, please press one, then zero now to comment on item seven, proclaiming January as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month. If you're not speaking on that item, hang on until your item is called. Supervisor Barger?
Thank you. I'll make this short. I just want to thank you, Supervisor Han, for co-authoring this motion with me. The Firefighter Cancer Support Network and International Association of Firefighters have declared January as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month. Since 2005, the Firefighter Cancer Support Network has provided assistance and one-on-one mentoring to thousands, thousands of cancer-stricken firefighters and support to their families. Their mission is to assist firefighters and EMS providers and their immediate families diagnosed with cancer by providing badge-to-badge support, training, and guidance through an incredibly difficult time. Every day, our firefighters serve our communities by putting our safety above their own, but they often work in a toxic environment of smoke, soot, and other carcinogens. Firefighter occupational cancer is a leading cause of line-of-duty deaths in firefighters and has reached an epidemic level. The Firefighter Cancer Support Network provides firefighters the necessary tools and guidance to develop lifesaving protocols for cancer prevention and to support those with a cancer diagnosis and those within the departments. Early detection of cancer through routine screening leads to early treatment and better disease outcomes, including improved survival and reduced morbidity. I am proud to have LA County join in proclaiming the month of January as Firefighter Cancer Support Month. It's important that we recognize and provide awareness to occupational cancer in fire service to help our firefighters reduce their risk of exposure and to support those who have been diagnosed. And I will say that, that I'm proud of the fact that in LA County, this firefighter support network was founded by Michael Dubron, who is a cancer survivor and has been cancer-free now for 20 years. Just retired. I saw him yesterday. And this was his vision, and it's now gone national, goes all over the state, all over the states, working with different agencies to really educate. We talk about, you know, the Narcan and all. This is about educating firefighters that when you put your, your uniform or your suit on, you've got to clean it, you've got to constantly be on top of this, and there are ways to prevent cancer in firefighters. So with that, I thank you for the co-author.
Thank you. And you're right, our LA County firefighters and all firefighters across this country put their lives on the line every day. And those here put their lives on the line for the residents and visitors, actually, to LA County. And too often, it's at the expense of their own health. These toxic work environments caused by smoke and other carcinogens mean our firefighters are more likely to get cancer than the general population. And I believe it is our responsibility to make sure that these firefighters get the support and the resources that they need for cancer prevention and treatment. And as anything, that work starts with awareness, and which is why we are doing this today, designating January as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month, bringing awareness to this issue, leveraging county resources. We're taking the first step to make sure that the health and wellness of our firefighters is not compromised by the essential work that we depend on them to do. Thank you for bringing this forward, Supervisor Barger. Any of my colleagues want to comment on this? Okay. Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this? Yes. Are they on the phone? Moderator, do we have some, anybody on the phone that would like to speak on item seven? Hearing none?
Yeah.
Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this? Okay.
Will Carla Cunningham please come forward and staff will assist you?
Carlos, are you on the phone?
Moderator, maybe we have the next speaker, please.
May begin. Our first participant is Armando Balnerama. You may begin.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, I was wanting to give comment on item three, but I was bypassed over.
Okay, no, this is item seven, unfortunately.
I know.
So we've already done item three. We apologize. Can we have the next speaker who wants to speak on item seven?
Our next participant is Janice.
Yeah, we, we, we're on item seven now? You know what? If anybody did not get, if, by the way, if anybody didn't get called or didn't get all your comments written, you can always turn your, your comments in. We will continue to take them till the end of the board meeting today on any of these items. Do we have anyone anywhere that would like to speak on item seven? Okay, hearing none. Item seven is before us. Supervisor Barger, you're going to move this. I will second it to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item seven is before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we're going to move on now to item nine, which is protecting county residents through curbing electronic benefits transfer card skimming, which was held by Supervisor Solis. For members of the public on the telephone, press one and then zero now to comment on item nine. Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and also thank you for co-authoring this, I think, very important motion before the board today. As you know, for almost three years, we've seen the need for county services to grow, even more so during the pandemic. This has been especially true for benefits offered by the Department of Social Services. Our residents, as you know, rely on these programs from CalWorks, General Leaf, to CalFresh. And as a state allows more people to access these critical benefits, Los Angeles County is doing our part to ensure that they're accessible to as many as possible. And as you know, this is our safety net. This is our responsibility. But unfortunately, it has been compromised in instances by some who are intent on stealing benefits away from the most vulnerable through the illegal practice of skimming. Skimming is where an illegal electronic device is installed on top of a card reader, such as at an ATM machine, gas pumps, and other point-of-sale terminals, allowing those who install the devices to steal a customer's information and withdraw their benefits. This has been happening across the state and the country. In fact, with electronic benefit transfer, transfer or EBT cards, which are used by DPS benefit recipients, we know that many of our old constituents have been impacted. And I've gotten numerous calls over the course of the last two years. This illegal activity is targeting people who use their EBT cards at gas stations, supermarkets, convenience stores, and even major banks. And back in 2022, Los Angeles County alone, we found there was over $19 million in stolen benefits, with December 2022 being the highest amount, $2.5 million. And as you know, this translates to a total of over 35,000 EBT cards for Los Angeles County residents and their families being compromised, an average of almost three residents and their families being compromised, an average of almost 3,000 a month. It's beyond troubling that residents are getting their EBT benefits stolen, but what is also alarming is how long it takes for them to even try to get those benefits restored, and in some cases, they're not. In fact, it can take up to a month or more, and sometimes longer, for benefits to be restored for an individual who has been scammed. And the process for that restoration is just a whole other set of barriers that are put in place. In order for benefits to be restored, victims must file a police report. But we all know that many times, it's very difficult, and many of our individuals that are using these cards are reluctant to submit a police report and therefore may not know how to move forward to get their benefits restored. Our residents can't wait, in many instances, a month for their benefits to be reactivated and should not have to go through several loopholes just to provide for their families. Instead, I believe we need real solutions, and this includes working with our federal and state government to advance immediate action to address the concern, including allowing chip technology so that residents can tap their cards instead of swiping them and removing the risk of skimming and removing the requirement for a police report. We also need to mobilize our relevant county departments from the Department of Public Social Services and the Department of Consumer and Business Affairs, including Department of Economic Opportunity and others, to implement a multilingual outreach campaign to local businesses and business associations to ensure that they are aware of these devices and how to address the concern. And this multilingual outreach campaign should also outreach to DPS customers and the public, leveraging ethnic and hyper-local media to make sure that they're aware of these scams and how to proceed if indeed they are targeted. The trend, as you know, has to come to a stop, and it does lead to serious harm, leaving our residents even more vulnerable and their families, and exposing them to deeper levels of poverty and possibly even homelessness. These residents already have so much on their plate and a lot to deal with, which includes also caring for their young children or even elderly, older adults, who are often unsheltered. So they do rely on this program. It is a lifeline, and it's unacceptable that anyone would steal benefits from Angelenos who receive government assistance, and this board should not stand for it. Therefore, my colleagues, I ask for your aye vote, and again, thank you, Madam Chair, for co-authoring this.
Yeah, thank you so much Supervisor Solis. This is such an important concept and idea and protection that we really need to do. So thank you for bringing this forward. In 2022 alone, L.A. County had over $19 million in stolen benefits, and it's a criminal ring that's taken advantage of our most vulnerable communities by skimming and stealing public benefits that belong to these residents. And as you said, a skimmer is a device that's installed on card readers that can be hard to detect. Sometimes you don't know that they're there at a gas station or somewhere else where you put your card in. It will collect the card numbers, and it captures your data and your PIN numbers, which is immediately then sent to criminals. And my office, too, Supervisor Solis, has received calls from constituents who've been victimized more than once. And I think the other really tough part, which you talked about, is we need to do a better job of getting them their benefits back. They need to be reimbursed for what was stolen, and that's been difficult. The state, the information that the state requires is sometimes hard to get, so we need to really work together on that. It's so frustrating for many of our county residents, and as you said, they depend on their DPS benefits to pay their utility bills, for food, to cover other necessities in their life. So this motion, thank you, will provide more accountability as we work with our state and federal partners to get more solutions, mainly to stop this, but then when it happens, to get them back what they are owed, because I think that's really important so they don't begin to spiral into, you know, homelessness or in a really bad place in their lives. So thank you for this. Skimming is scamming. Trying to beat your other soundbite that you had earlier in the meeting. Okay. Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you, Supervisor, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much Supervisor Solis for bringing this forward. You know, it's not new, the theft of public benefits, but I certainly, you know, remember the old days when checks in the mail and food stamps would get stolen? And, you know, we understood in those, that lack of technology in those times, that it would take a long time to replace benefits. But, you know, I was in the state legislature when counties across the state, and we all made the transition to EBT cards, and the thought was, technology will make it quick, that people don't have to wait, you know? As my mother, as a social worker, would say, you have to wait for Mother's Day, you know, the first and the 15th, when your check would arrive. But through EBT transactions, it could be instantaneous. And we certainly have to make sure that when people are victims of theft, and let's be clear, these are public benefits, so it is a theft against all of us, that we can expedite making sure they get their public benefit. These are entitlement programs. And so thank you so much. I'm sad that it continues to be an issue, both on the theft side and the delay with which we can respond to make good on the benefit. So thank you for your motion, and I'll be proud to support it today.
Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I know. I see how it is. We have Supervisor Horvath. You are up there on the board.
Thank you very much. I want to echo my colleagues' comments and thank both Supervisors Solis and Han for bringing this item forward. I want, I'm glad that we are focusing on this issue as was stated. It is not a new one, but it is manifesting in a new way, and I just want to emphasize, in particular, the federal government's role in helping us to shift to chip-enabled cards will help us also address this issue. And I know we will do all we can at the county level to address what we are seeing in this coordinated effort to take people's benefits, but we must also work with other levels of government to ensure that technology we already employ every day with our bank cards and other ways can protect people who are most vulnerable to these kinds of attacks. And so those efforts will be strengthened because of this motion. Thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you. Supervisor Barker?
I just, I have a question, and maybe it's just for another time, but I mean, I wholeheartedly support this, but this is not a victimless crime. And it is increasing. I mean, to your point, we've had people call that literally had their card reloaded and the money was stolen again. And I have to wonder if there is something more to this in terms of where, if we're looking to see where the scams are taking place, because I know that some of this is organized crime, and I think it's important for us to collaborate, because it is not a victimless crime. And while I know that we've got in the motion the language to, you know, measured accountability, I want to make sure accountability, if it's happening with our, yeah, that law enforcement is involved in tracking where this is taking place, because I will guarantee you that there probably are some vendors that might be involved, and I think it's important for us to let them know that they are on our radar. You know, we talk about the fact that with OxyContin, we were notifying doctors when we saw increase down at the corner. I want vendors to know that we're seeing an increase in skimming taking place at certain locations that we're on to it.
Thank you, Supervisor. I think we probably could work with the Department DPS to do a heat map
Good.
of where we are getting the reports from, and then we could provide those to local law enforcement
Good.
in the areas where we see
Yeah.
an uptick or where, just basically where it's happening. We could just provide the data to the various jurisdictions.
Madam, Madam Chair, can I just insert?
Yes.
I think that's a great idea.
Yes.
Me, too. I would even go a bit further, maybe at some of these locations, especially the banks and vendors, that we have some kind of an information sticker that says, you see something, here, call and report it. And I think we've got to be more diligent. We do it for other causes, we should be able to do it for this.
Yeah. Yeah, this seems like it's a, this motion has got some legs, both with this sort of a warning at the point of contact and throwing this over to the Sheriff's Department as well to get involved with us.
So we can work with DCBA on doing a communication and a messaging campaign, and then we'll work with DPS to create a heat map.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Are there members of the public that would like to weigh in on this? Please call them. Moderator, who's our first speaker?
Our first participant is Andron. Our first participant is Andron Stadler. Please begin.
Yes, Happy New Year, Board of Supervisors, and welcome Supervisor Horvath to the fabulous five. My name is Adele Andrade Stadler. I am the Chair of the Commission of Public Services and Mayor of Alhambra. Thank you Supervisor Solis and Chair Han and what sounds like most of you, if not all of you, for addressing the skimming or the theft of millions of dollars to our most vulnerable, at the most vulnerable time in our history. I support the development to secure the benefits for our families trying to lift themselves out of poverty, and I support the development of a campaign in multiple languages for our outreach. I would not ignore the farmers' markets. They do a fabulous job of taking the benefit card and helping families reach. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the hard work you are doing. You've already hit the ground running, and it's just January. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Lena Silver. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Lena Silver, and I'm an Associate Director of Litigation and Policy Advocacy at Neighborhood Legal Services, providing free legal aid to the community's most vulnerable residents, including public benefits beneficiaries. I want to thank Supervisors Solis and Han for this very important motion. Over the past year, we have seen EBT skimming skyrocket. This is despite the state adding CDD functionality to EBT cards in mid-2022. In the 10 days the law permits the county to restore stolen benefits, a family can face deprivation of their most basic needs. Further, the law only allows reimbursement of one month of CalFresh benefits, although people often have more saved for a rainy day. When someone is scammed, it usually occurs within the first few hours that the benefits are deposited, wiping out their entire monthly balance, leaving them unable to pay rent. It's deeply impactful that L.A. County will advocate at the state and federal level for an EBT system that meets consumer protection standards, including chip technology. It's similarly meaningful that the county will engage in a comprehensive, multilingual outreach campaign to ensure beneficiaries have the knowledge to protect themselves.
Thank you.
Finally, we really appreciate the directive
Thank you.
to ensure swift reimbursement.
Thank you so much for calling in. Moderator, may we have our next speaker?
Our next participant is Genesis Foster. You may begin.
Greetings, Supervisors. My name is Genesis Lauren Foster. I'm a CalWorks and CalFresh beneficiary, a mother, and a student at Los Angeles City College. I'm a member of Project Spark, a research project where student parents are reimagining the community college and CalWorks systems. I want to thank Supervisor Hilda Solis and Supervisor Janice Han for their motion to address EBT card skimming, which has been financially distressing and detrimental to the families victimized by these scammers. I have had my benefits stolen twice, once in February and again in August of 2022. The first time, it took over 40 days to have the stolen benefits replaced, although the police report and EBT claim were filed within 24 hours. The second time, my family was victimized, it took over three weeks to get my benefits replaced. In both cases, I was told it would take 10 days at most, rent, bills, and other financial responsibilities when unpaid. Those who don't have family or friends to loan them money are literally financially destitute until their benefits are replaced. For those who are able to borrow, the money has to be repaid out of their replaced benefits. Not one DPS CalWorks family, a CalFresh family, should be placed in even deeper financial hardship due to a failure of the issued card's security. This almost $50 million
Thank you.
loss for families
Thank you so much.
was preventable.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Moderator, can we have our next speaker, please?
Our next participant is Christina LaGuardia. Please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hello. Hello, my name is Christina LaGuardia, and like Genesis, I am also a student and CalWorks and CalFresh beneficiary. I go to Glendale Community College, and I had my benefits stolen last two months ago, and it took over a month and a half, and only with the help of Lena Silver and Erin Edwards, I was able to actually have somebody help me. The lack of communication between the EBT card place and our Cal and the benefit office is so much that I filed the police report and I also filed the claim, and it wasn't until I got help from Lena and Erin that I was informed that I was missing steps because nobody told me, even though I went to the office to get a replacement card, because they replaced my, they made my card inactive, but they never sent the replacement, which meant that not only had my benefits stolen, but I couldn't buy any food for 15 days because they never sent my replacement.
Oh, thank you.
And again, it was only when Erin and Lena.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in, and hopefully what we're doing today will help you. But thank you for sharing your story. Moderator, can we have our next speaker?
Our next participant is Erin Edwards. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Erin Edwards, and my pronouns are she/her. I'm the Director of the Glendale Community College CalWorks Program and a Board Member at the California Community Colleges CalWorks Association. I would like to thank Supervisor Hilda Solis and Supervisor Janice Han for this important motion. The theft of EBT benefits is widespread, and it is due to systemic security failings within the EBT system. These are not thefts due to any lack of carefulness among CalWorks recipients. For many months, including during the holidays, this systemic theft has been the direct cause of hunger and homelessness among our students, neighbors, friends, and families. Many L.A. County CalWorks families have had their benefits stolen month after month, and the county then takes months to reimburse them, or the benefits are never reimbursed because the county fails to communicate the complicated steps necessary for families to have their stolen benefits refunded. Our county has shifted the burden of resolving problems caused by our public benefits system onto the people the system was designed to support. This is an emergency situation. I urge you
Thank you.
to connect with CalWorks recipients
Thank you.
in your district. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to do better. Moderator, may we have the next speaker, please?
Our next participant is Badon Kaza. You may begin.
Hi. A few ways to stop skimming is to make new cards sent with contactless chips, so everyone who has the benefit card can simply tap on the point-of-sale system for where they use it for. Add a new law to make every gas station and ATM have contactless payments for the outside payment system will stop a lot of scams. Most criminals are most likely to add the skin device on payment system located not inside stores. Another way is to send cash instead of a card, so no skimming is possible, and that'll be all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other speakers in queue to address the board on this item.
Thank you. So hearing no comments, item nine is before us. It'll be moved by Supervisor Solis. I'm going to second it to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item nine is before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, now we're going to move on to item 10, colleagues. It's proclaiming January 21st through 31st as the Greater Los Angeles Youth Homeless Count, which was held by Supervisor Solis. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Supervisor Solis, would you like to make some remarks?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for recognizing me. As you know, each year, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, LASSA, conducts a point-in-time count to collect data on our homeless population. Concurrently, LASSA, in partnership with USC and Lens Co., also spends about 10 days tallying information about the number of unhoused youth in all of L.A. County. According to the 2022 Greater Los Angeles Youth Count, an estimated 2,822 young people in Los Angeles County on any given night experiencing homelessness. This number, which includes both young adults ages 18 through 24 and unaccompanied children under 18, reflects a 40% decrease from 2020. Among these young people, 15% report current or previous involvement in our child welfare system, and 68% report previous and current involvement in the juvenile and criminal justice system. We know that. However, in 2022, youth count that was done was held in the middle of the Omicron surge, limiting the number of volunteers limiting the number of volunteers available to conduct the count. That is why I think it's more important than ever to get an accurate count this year. In addition to supporting the Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count, it's necessary for us to focus our efforts and attention on the LA Youth Count to ensure that young people are represented in estimates of those experiencing homelessness in our communities. The longer someone is unsheltered, as we know, the harder it becomes to obtain permanent housing. And it's crucial that we count youth experiencing homelessness to identify the causes of youth homelessness and connect those youth to vital services. This count, it's my belief, will help us determine what resources are needed. That's the topic for today as well, and one that I believe all of us here on the board strongly support. This year, we'll be opening up two Project Home Key sites specifically dedicated to support youth, but only two of many hundreds of young people that are still out there needing homes. This will bring close to 70 interim housing beds to our youth in the county. More work has to be done, no doubt, so let's work together on that. I hope that with a more accurate count this time around that we'll be able to open up more housing sites and provide dedicated supportive services to our young people. The motion, as you know, proclaims January 21st to January 31st, 2023, as the Greater Los Angeles Youth Homeless Count Week. Let us all get our young people in our districts to help us out. Sometimes the power of just having young people engage in helping us do the count really spurs more interest and it broadens our ability to reach out to so many more people. I respectfully ask for your aye vote, and I also want to encourage our county employees to volunteer in this effort as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis. Seeing none of my colleagues wanting to comment on this, let's go to the public. Please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers.
Okay, so hearing no comments.
We do have telephonic speakers.
Sorry. Please call the speakers on the phone.
Our first participant is Aaron Fox. You may begin.
Yes, thank you. This is Aaron Fox from the Los Angeles LGBT Center. I want to thank Supervisor Solis for her motion to encourage volunteers for the Youth Homeless Count. LGBT youth are disproportionately impacted by homeless and housing insecurity. On any given night in LA, approximately 40% of youth in LA County identify as LGBT, and so an accurate count is even more important for us to provide services and resources to the disproportionately impacted communities that are affected by homelessness in LA County. Thank you again, Supervisor Solis.
Thank you. Moderator, may we have next speaker, please?
Our next speaker will be Mark Marcarion. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Mark Marcarion, and I am the Regional Coordinator at Sycamores, which is the lead agency for the Youth Coordinated Entry System. I do want to thank Supervisor Solis for her motion to encourage volunteers for the Youth Homelessness Count and for her knowledgements about the difficulties of the 2020 count and how that was misrepresented, the statistics. As we know, there is a nuanced accounting of young adults as they do not present a colloquially, you know, vision of what it means to be homeless. So therefore, the more volunteers we have, the more we put out the word that this is going on, the more accurate information we can have, which then impact our funding when it comes to grants like the Youth Homeless Demonstration Program and just garnishes more attention to those young adults who are underserved and helps them unlearn what it is like to be homeless. Once again, thank you so much, Supervisors.
Thank you for your comments. Moderator, may we have the next speaker?
Madam Chair, there are no other speakers in queue to address this item number.
Is there anybody in person? No. Okay. So since there's no other comments, item 10 is now before us. It'll be moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Horvath. To approve this item, Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 10 is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath.
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Great. It'll be nice one year that we didn't have to proclaim the Greater Los Angeles Youth Homeless Count. Just seeing those words is a sobering reminder. But thank you for bringing that forward. Okay, we're going to go to item 36, colleagues, which is the Downey Laboratory Expansion and Renovation Project Construction Contract, which I held, and I'm sure you're wondering why. But for members of the public on the telephone, please press one and zero now to comment on this item. So I'm highlighting this, holding this item, colleagues, to highlight the important work that our Downey Public Health Laboratory does and what our public can expect to see us accomplish with this expansion and renovation. A lot of people don't understand that we actually do have a public health laboratory here in the region. It's also for the whole Southern California region. And especially in emergency situations, this public health laboratory really is important. Our laboratory staff have a huge scope of work. They test human, animal, and environmental samples for hundreds of diseases and pathogens. Over the course of the past 10 years, our public health lab has seen a dramatic increase in workload, with the current test volume now over 500,000 tests per year. Just for context, New York does less than half of that at 200,000 per year. And we've really outgrown our space in Downey. There's no room for storage. The workspaces are cramped. They got temporary trailers out there. So this board letter that we have before us today will establish this project to renovate it, construct a new standalone building. These upgrades are specific to strengthening our ability to respond to public health emergencies. And you know, as we found during the COVID pandemic, and again during the MPOCs, our ability to turn around test results makes a difference. How many times did we hear, oh, the results are lagging because of the weekend or because the capacity outgrew what our lab's capacity was? So this is going to help, and I appreciate your support on this. Are there members of the public that would like to speak on this? Or is it any of my colleagues? No. No members of public. I knew no one really got why I was holding this. But trust me, this is going to be important, and it's going to make a difference as we move forward because who knows what next pandemic is around the corner? And this lab, right here in LA County, is going to make a difference. Okay, so seeing no comments on this very important item, I will move it. Who wants to second it? Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell. Thank you. Thank you. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item number 36 is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath.
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Great. Now we're going to move on to item 50, which is the Exchange of Services Agreement Amendment. Oh my God, which I also held. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Oh, this is another good item. You'll, I'm sure you'll withhold judgment until you hear about it. But this board letter will allow the Fire Department's Lifeguard Division to continue to use 65 Toyota trucks while the department works on a new solicitation. And the reason I'm holding this is because I'm going to support this agreement currently. It's going to give us two more years leasing these Toyota trucks for our lifeguards on the beach, Supervisor Mitchell and Supervisor Horvath. But I think it is time for this county to move forward, particularly with trucks on the beach, to begin to go electric. And I think I have attached to this item today that, you know, I think we're going to support this. But I want this, you know, this board in 2021, Supervisor Horvath, before you were here, we adopted a county fleet vehicle policy that directed our departments to purchase zero emission vehicles moving forward. And I think people who recreate on our beaches, the last thing they're going to want is trucks that, you know, are gas-powered and produce emissions. If you've ever been down there on the beach, you see how closely these lifeguard trucks travel to people. People who are lying on the beach, people who are there to enjoy a picnic on the beach. And this makes sense for me to be okay with this two-year lease, but then after that, we need to start looking at electrifying their fleet. So my amendment to this will be that I therefore move that the Board of Supervisors direct the interim Fire Chief of the Los Angeles County Fire Department to give preference to all electric vehicles to be used by the Lifeguard Division on county beaches. So I think it's important that we do that. Supervisor Mitchell, were you up there for the last one? Or did you want to speak on this?
For this one.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing the motion forward, having personally made that transition myself. I agree it's an important action. As you said, we want to practice what we preach, particularly with regard to the vehicles used on the beaches. So I support the motion.
Thank you. Are there members of public that would like to speak on that? Ooh, yes. Are they in person or are they on the phone?
Will Dr. Kardikal Truth Bay, Herman Herman, and Mike Greenspan please come forward, and Steph will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first speaker?
Oh, wait, wait. I think we're going to go the phone first, Herman, but then you can come down here to the front row, and we'll get you after we take the telephonic version. Okay, on the phone, go ahead.
Our first participant is Sofia Ciones. You may begin.
Hello, yes, I support the motion, only that I think it should be amended so that we could have a hybrid vehicle for security reasons because electric vehicles, if they're hacked, can be, well hacked, and they can be immobilized. So I think for security reasons, you should also always have a hybrid available. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have our next speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no other speakers in queue to address this item.
Okay, so we're going in person. Either one.
Well, thank you, Janet Mommy. This is item 10, public. And, you know, money don't grow on trees.
No, 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 no. This is item 50.
Oh, I'm sorry, 50. You're right, you're right.
Yeah, thank you.
My mathematics is a little poor ever since I suffered a brain injury like some of you, but no offense, Madam Attorney, on record. So, ladies and gentlemen, item 50 regarding Exchange Services Agreement. Well, money don't grow on trees, nor does this idea of 65 Toyota vehicles for lifeguards. Come on, you're young, you're healthy, you're full of energy. Why can't you run in your little tight shorts, your little bikinis on the beach and do your job? Why do you have to drive a fancy, brand-new Toyota? I oppose this. In addition to that, why do we have money going for expensive Toyotas and we should provide housing that is more important instead of this over-cost condominiums for housing? It don't make sense. Please relate that, Ms. Janet.
Thank you. All right, appreciate that.
See you.
Are there any other speakers in person? Hearing no other comments, colleagues, item 50 as amended is before us. I'm going to move it. I will second it by Supervisor Horvath. I meant Mitchell. I was looking right. Is that okay? We're taking it away from, we're taking it away from you, and we're giving it to Supervisor Mitchell. To approve this item, Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 50 as amended is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath.
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. Well, now we're going to move on to item 52. This is the report by the Inspector General on reforms and oversight efforts, which I held. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. We have Max Huntsman, Inspector General. We have Undersheriff April Tardy. We have Assistant Sheriff Sergio Oloma and Dr. Timothy Belovich, who is the Director of our Correctional Health Services, that will be here for questions. Hold on. I'm just going to start this off. So I, but I'm going to be brief, colleagues. I held this so that we could have a chance to ask questions and get some answers, and I think it's important for the public also to hear our dialogue on this, especially since we have a new sheriff. We actually continued this item from, you know, last December because we felt like, since we did have a new sheriff, give him a chance and his team a chance to respond to this. So I'd like to start by offering our Inspector General, Max Huntsman, an opportunity to give us a brief overview of this quarterly oversight report, and I'm sure my colleagues and I will have some questions. Thank you, Max.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. The quarterly report, as you say, is in part historical because it was entered during a previous administration. But some of the matters are, of course, ongoing. On a positive note, there seems to have been a reduction in the number of deputy-involved shootings in this last year. So we had seen the few years prior to that increasing numbers, and now the numbers seem to have gone down a bit. We'll hope that trend continues. I would highlight for you, there's a reference to an incident in which a deputy-involved shooting generated a criminal case which resulted in an acquittal, which is often the case when such cases are filed. And it's still a matter for the Sheriff's Department to handle in terms of internal discipline. And as we indicated in the report, we will do an analysis of their handling of that once it's complete. There's also in the report a section on the way in which opportunities for employment are distributed in the jail, particularly CRDF. So I recommend that section. As you can see, it's an ongoing problem that has not been resolved, but we will continue to work with the Sheriff's Department and other county partners to try to encourage them to improve. And then finally, there's the matter of jail overcrowding, a drum that I have been beating for many years, that we're well above the BSCC cap for our jail facilities. And as a result, there are a variety of negative outcomes in the jails. Most recently, we saw a renewal of a very old federal case against the county Rutherford involving unconstitutional conditions. And a federal judge ordered us to immediately change the conditions within the inmate reception center, which shockingly to me, we did within a week. a week. And since then, we've managed to have all but eliminated the long stays on the front bench tethered for mentally ill people, as well as reduced the backlogs within the jails. Part of that is that the court was generous to us in the order and did not include some connected facilities. So it's not all happy days down in the reception of people coming into jail. And just this last week, there was a closing because of an absence of high-observation housing available within the jail. So they were unable to move people, but to their credit, they did close to incoming inmates while they were unable to house them. I'm a little nervous about the way in which they seem to have solved the issue, at least temporarily, although perhaps members from the department and CHS can address that. And my office will be looking closely at that to make sure that the improvements on the front end, which we've been asking for for years and now have happened so quickly, aren't the result of something being changed in a way that has a negative income, outcome, such as declassification of people out of high-observation housing inappropriately, as has happened in the past. But that's, again, a problem for another day. And that's it, absent questions.
Thank you. I'm going to turn over my colleagues first.
Let's see.
Supervisor Barker.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. In the last OIG report, there was serious concerns about the long wait times at the IRC, and those conditions led, as you know, to the ACLU's request for a temporary restraining order, which was granted. So, I mean, I guess my question to you, Max, is have the wait times in the IRC improved? And what changes have been implemented since the court granted the TIR? I know you touched on it, and how quickly it was done. Are you seeing improvements continuing?
Yes, they have been sustained so far. There has not been a bottleneck of significant amount that I'm aware of since the order, and particularly with respect to the front bench wait times, which are the most concerning for mentally ill people who are tethered during that time. They've kept that as ordered to under four hours, which I believe is appropriate. As I say, I'm not sure I know how they did it. I know some things about how they did it, and you might want to ask representatives of other departments to address that at the appropriate time, but I can tell you, my office will be continuing to look at how it was done to make sure that it was done properly.
Do you all want to weigh in on that from the Sheriff's Department?
Sure.
By the way, it's great. I love, I'm one of your biggest admirers, April. Go on.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us here this afternoon, and I want to thank Mr. Huntsman and his staff for their report. We take it seriously, and we appreciate his recommendations and his findings. As it relates to the IRC and our wait times, the TRO filed in September, obviously, and it's already been mentioned by Max, caused us to, and we were actually already looking at additional mental health housing at our Pitchance Attention Center North facility. That opened up housing here in the basin, which I think had a partial impact or effect on the reception center. The other strategy that we employed was a 24-hour clock. In the past, we've always had a 24-hour clock, but in the past, we've also had a 16-hour clock, and I think for some of our staff, that caused some confusion. So as part of the TRO, we moved to just have one clock, which I think alleviated some of that confusion as it related to our staff and moving folks to appropriate housing.
Excellent.
Dr. Belovich has any comments?
Under Sheriff Tardy, do you have anything to add? No?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay. Dr. Belovich?
Hi, good afternoon. As Assistant Sheriff Aloma stated, yes, the major impact that we had on reducing the overcrowding in the IRC was identifying additional housing specifically for the mentally ill. I think that we're in a much better place today. I fear that that will not last, that this is only temporary. As of yesterday morning, we had 6,881 individuals enrolled in mental health programs in our jail. Our census is roughly 14,500, so 47% of the population at this point is enrolled in mental health programs, and that number just continues to climb. Mr. Huntsman spoke about the fact of a concern with declassing, and that's a term we use that we are strongly against in terms of when crowding becomes too much, there's sometimes pressure on our clinicians to reduce the level of care that a patient would have. And we are wholly against that, and we work against that. I don't, I'm not concerned that, I think the pressure's always there, but I'm not concerned as much that it's actually happening because our numbers do continue to climb, and especially in our acutely mentally ill. Right now, we have, in our male population of HOH, our high-observation housing, we have 1,700 individuals. About four years ago, we had 900 individuals who fit that classification. I'm sorry, we have 1,500. So it's been about an increase of 600 over that time period. So the numbers do keep going up.
Which leads me to the next question. I know that aside from the TRO, the county continues to be under the close observation of both federal judge and court monitor, and I know my office has been in contact with the monitor, and they are saying that there's still some provisions that are not being complied with. And during our discussion, I asked you actually, Doctor, what is needed to achieve compliance with the remaining DOJ consent decree provisions? And it was staffing, shortages, difficulties with hiring, bed space, and capacity seem to be the challenges. And I want to thank the CEO, Fiezzi, I want to thank you and your staff for working with all parties involved to address the remaining provisions under this consent decree, because this is not arbitrarily, this board, this is a federal court monitor. And so a little over 13 million was included in the supplemental budget specifically to provide near-term compliance with provisions of 63, 64, and 80. I guess my question to you, Doctor, is how much progress, if any, has been made to those programs that will directly impact those three provisions?
Provision 80 is difficult because it is specifically based, it will be impossible to comply with the number of individuals we have. So unless we do reduce the mental health population, we, no amount of staffing or space will bring us into compliance with that. However, the positive in terms of getting positions and being allocated positions, that has, that has been, that has been good. We are working diligently to fill those positions. It's difficult. Previously, we've talked today even about the challenges with getting healthcare staff. We have, we reallocated 80 new positions in October. We have filled 12 at this point, and zero have shown up for work at this point because they're still in the hiring process. So it is very slow.
So I guess my question would be, I mean, we talk about the all-hands-on-deck as it relates to the homeless issue. I would ask that we do an all-hands-on-deck as it relates to the hiring, and I know they have to go through backgrounds, I mean, which is, makes sense, and we want that, but there's got to be ways for us to fast-track on that because we are, again, competing for the same employees, actually even within our own departments now. So, Fiezzi.
Thank you. Herman, you know you're not allowed to yell out from your seat. And people on the floor, let's make sure we keep the audience quiet, and remember, you can always raise your hands if you agree with something.
Yep. So I would just ask.
And yes, that is something we can continue to work on, Supervisor. I think one of the important things we need to better understand, not just in this process, but overall, where are the things that we control, those time periods, developing a bulletin, and then all the other stuff, like the background check, and we're hiring in a vendor to do that. I think we need to separate those out and then skinny down ours as much as is appropriate.
Great. And then one last question, because I don't want, I know my colleagues all have questions as well. To Assistant Sheriff Aloma or to Under Sheriff Tardy, how many of the inmates in our custody are awaiting transfer to state facilities, and have there been any delays in getting those transfers done?
I can answer that, Supervisor. So that number obviously fluctuates from week to week. We work very closely with CDCR as it relates to those who are in the point of their processing that they're ready to be transferred to state facilities or state intake facilities. This morning, numbers for state inmates waiting transfer to state facilities, men, 524, women, 26, so that's a total of 550. And that's about, that's been about the number for some time, for what we refer to as SP4s, and that means that all of their paperwork has been processed and they're ready to go. And then we have other levels of processing that, where we, the count is higher than that, usually about 1,000 or so that are sentenced, but their paperwork has not been completely processed. The SP4s are, again, the 550 that I just gave you, and we send about 150 per week to CDCR intake.
Okay, I mean, I think, so we have a good relationship. I mean, there is communication going on, and the transfers are taking place in a...
We are. We have no complaints. CDCR has been very collaborative with us in making sure that those transfers happen on a regular basis.
Okay, well, I just, I have to publicly, and I always embarrass you, Doctor, but I hope we all recognize how fortunate we are. I know my staff toured with Dr. Belovich, who literally, as he's taking the tour, showing them tour, was stopping to find out what was going on with inmates, make sure they were getting the services and care and treatment they needed in real time. So while he's down here testifying before us, he's out literally with the population, identifying individuals that may be falling through the cracks. And so I really want to thank you for your dedication. I'd love to clone you and bring many of you into the system because you really are doing it as a public service because you recognize the importance of it. So thank you, and thank you all.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Max, our Inspector General, for being back here and for the work of your staff and providing this quarterly report. It seems like it's been a long time to really get this information back into our hands, and so I thank you and your staff for that and all the work that they've done, especially in the last two and a half years, in spite of the pandemic and all that was going on, because I'm sure there's a lot that we can learn from what took place in our jails at that time as well. But I wanted to ask you, what changes have you seen already with the, with the new sheriff, with Sheriff Luna, that brings us, I think, to this space that we're at today? Are we in a better position?
Absolutely. We're in world's better. Our new sheriff and the staff that he's put in place only talk about compliance with the law. They never make threats or claims that they're not going to cooperate or anything like that. We've had nothing but yeses in our work with them to try to get us back into compliance with the board's oversight responsibilities under California law. We're not there 100% yet. We have work to do, but it's not for lack of cooperation and enthusiasm. At the same time, I hear of the plans that are echoing. We've been allowed to go back to some of the planning meetings and be able to hear in real time the process that's been gone through. It's not perfect, but it's world's better, and as a result, I have a lot more confidence that they're making a real effort to discharge the legal duties of the Sheriff's Department, both in terms of custody and out on the street. It's obviously a challenge, and that doesn't mean there'll be success, but it means we have a partner in the Sheriff's Department that we have not had for some time. So it's a very, it's a happy time for me.
So Max, can I ask you a little bit about, I think this new initiative that the sheriff brought, and that was to restore access to the databases and the facilities, because you were precluded in many instances from that. Can you explain to me or give me some ideas how that has changed already?
Well, the previous sheriff made unlawful orders that we, that the board's access through us being shut down as to a variety of databases, which you mentioned, one that is called PRMS. It's a tracking system for a lot of information within the Sheriff's Department. We have had our access restored to that. There have been some hiccups along the way, and every single time when we've gone back to the Sheriff's Department, they have addressed our concerns, and we've had a working partnership. So we're, like I say, we're not 100% back to where we should have been, but for the last four years, but it's not for lack of trying. Also, the body-worn camera issue, as we know, because there was recently a deputy who was on camera engaging in some very questionable conduct, which will be investigated by the Sheriff's Department, then the ability for us to look at that in real time is critical. They've agreed to provide us that complete access. We had some disagreements about how to do it, and in each case, they were cooperative and collaborative and worked with us, and we came up with solutions that all involved could be confident would allow us compliance with the law without interfering with their duties. So nothing but success in the database area, and I expect in the years to come, we're going to have a stronger Sheriff's Department and stronger county as a result.
Just to follow up, I know that in the past, we've had difficulty getting information with respect to deputy-involved shootings, and I wanted to know if that has changed in terms of investigative reports being available, documents, as well as you mentioned, body-worn camera information and footage?
I believe it has changed. My staff have been already out on shootings where we have been treated much more appropriately. One of my key asks for 10 years has been that we get the kind of access that the capos of, from the DA's office gets. In other words, there has always been a second-class citizen approach to the oversight mechanisms, including in the DA's office, where the prosecutors who are responsible for prosecuting somebody who shoots at a police officer get much more cooperation than the prosecutors who have the opposite responsibility. And I have been assured that that's going to change, and in fact, we're getting all our on-the-ground indications are that that is changing. So I don't say it'll happen overnight. There's an old saying that culture eats policy for lunch, so just because the boss orders a thing doesn't mean it happens, but all indications are not only that we have a good partner in the management of the Sheriff's Department, but also, I think, a willingness as we go down the ranks, thanks to relationships that we've kept up over the years, even in tough times, to adjust to this new world we live in. I don't say it'll be without conflict or without problems, but I think so far, so good.
So one other, you know, concern that I have, and I think maybe other members might share this, is the fact that we had during the past of maybe three or four years, a lot of deputy-involved shootings, and those investigations were cut off. We had a lot of family members that have come to this board meeting talking about no results, no report, and where are you at? Where's your office at? Are you possibly considering going back and revisiting those particular areas that we were not able to get information and the families were not?
I think we will...
Where legally possible, right?
Where legally possible, we're going to encourage the Sheriff's Department to provide information to the public, including family members. And I think that this board has already taken an important step by delegating to county council a function with respect to PRAs that you have also staffed to some degree, and county councils in the process of putting that together. I think that mechanism will facilitate the provision of this information, which under California law, people are entitled to, to get them the information in a timely manner, and I think we can go back historically. We're required by law to go back historically and satisfy the lawful demands of families who have lost loved ones in the past years. I don't want to put all of our resources into trying to immediately solve that problem because the deputy gang problem is a direct one, which we have a mandate now to work on, and we plan to work on aggressively going forward. But I do believe the problem you're referring to, which hasn't gone away for the families who are seeking answers, will hopefully be addressed in time through county council's efforts, and it's my understanding that the Sheriff's Department has been very cooperative with county council in that regard as well.
And I know it's a delicate, delicate subject, but in many, in many instances, I think it's important for the sheriff and his staff to be seen out at our community meetings that we hold, especially in the East LA area and the station there, because we have been riddled with so many problems and challenges there for the last four years. I would hope that the sheriff would soon hold a town hall meeting out there and possibly with the Civilian Oversight Commission to allow for the families that are grieved to come in and get a chance to really talk to him. I think he did speak to some of them in the past year or so, but I think it's important moving forward to allow for his vision to also be shared with the public. They've gone through so much, and so have our offices and our staffs, as well as the deputies that are trying to do the right thing out in the area. And I really believe this is a time for healing, and really would like to encourage, and I'd love to hear from the new, the new staff too, what your, what your feeling is on these, on these items.
Thank you, and I am pleased to be here. Just to echo some of the things that Max said, we are changing. Our department has changed significantly just in this month, and we are looking forward and not looking back. I agree with you as far as town hall meetings and getting out in the community and letting them hear our voice and some of the things that we're seeing, and they can share with us what they're seeing and how we can do better for them. Our communities have been through a lot over these past few years, and I'm looking forward to hearing some of their suggestions. And I always say, people are upset when they don't believe they have a voice or they don't know what's going on, and I think that's where a lot of our communities are right now. So yes, I've been taking down notes. I know Sheriff Luna plans on going, hosting some town... I know Sheriff Luna plans on going, hosting some town hall meetings. And I know East LA should probably be one of the first stations he should attend, along with some stations up north. I look forward to working with all of you. And Max and I have had numerous conversations. You mentioned county council. Last week, it was welcome to have Elizabeth Miller back in the building. And so we welcomed her back to her old offices and getting everything situated for her and for her staff to be back at the Hall of Justice.
How about our new undershirt?
Thank you. No, and I echo the same comments. And speaking to Sheriff Luna, I know that transparency and collaboration are extremely important to him. And it's all, those things have always been very important to us. And speaking directly about the jails, we have always felt that we've had a collaborative relationship with the OIG and with their staff. They're in our buildings every day. We welcome it. We welcome constructive criticism. We know that we can do better. And sometimes it takes someone looking at it from a from a different lens to point those things out to us. So we we welcome the OIG, I want to say back in the building. They've always been in the building. So we we look forward to that that relationship continuing. And again, improving our our services to those that are housed in our facilities and their their loved ones who worry about them while they're in our custody.
Thank you. Just just lastly, I recall our our sheriff talking about going back to some things that were applied before under previous administrations and in part, more programming for education and for opportunities for work related opportunities, which means training, workforce training. And I'm hopeful that those kinds of things will be instituted as concurrently as we we start to look at other reforms. But that that should be happening because not everyone is going to stay with us for a long period of time. And we should be able to try to provide them with resources and referrals readily so that they can make their way back to their communities and their homes. So I just wanted to to underscore that.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Solis. Supervisor Holly J. Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Janice Hahn. Appreciate you. Supervisor Solis, I couldn't agree with you more with regard to the town halls. I hadn't been on the board but a couple of months and had the opportunity to participate in a Zoom meeting with you on a Saturday for hours where we listened to those very painful stories with very reasonable ask and request from family members in terms of what happened to my son, what happened to my brother and my husband. So town halls would be, I think, right on time, and so I want to second that suggestion. Particularly town halls that don't limit the people who can show up. I had a number of constituents who wanted to attend some of the town halls under the previous administration and and were blocked. So true open town halls, I think, would be very helpful. Happy New Year to you all. It was wonderful to meet you under Sheriff Tardy, and I welcome you here to the board meeting. Mr. Huntsman, my team and I wait more often than not with bated breath for your quarterly reports. And I know the, and of course, these reports are always, you know, in arrears, if you will. And so this report covers the period, I think, July to September. So I'm going to look forward to the changes and the culture shift you just alluded to, to reports from now, when hopefully it will begin to reflect what you. I've never seen you so light in terms of your report on these reports.
It's been a while.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can feel it. So I look forward to that opportunity to to really, for you and your assessment and the assessment of your team, to track the culture shift. It's been a long time coming, and I and I look forward to us turning that corner. Couple of questions. I think really for the sheriff's representatives, as we as we listen to the issues around overcrowding, and I appreciate the work you're doing in identifying additional mental health treatment beds. We know that much of the root cause of the deficiencies we're witnessing is just because of overcrowding. And I'm curious as to whether the sheriff intends to use his discretion to release people who've been charged but not convicted of certain crimes. I think as we consider all of the causes that are leading to overcrowding, I'm just curious as to whether this sheriff intends to use that discretion.
So we we have a number of strategies that we currently use for releases, including early releases. And and they include our traditional county sentenced inmates. The pre-trials are a little bit different. However, we have begun conversations related to supervised release of pre-trial inmates to see what that would look like and whether or not we can accomplish that. That is a strategy that we have used in the past, but not to a great extent. So that's something that we want to look at moving forward. I've recently, just before the holidays, spoke to Ms. Armstead, Shanghai Armstead of J-COD. We had a really good virtual meeting. We discussed various strategies also related to pre-trial individuals. So those are all things that, as she comes back from her vacation, we plan on meeting and discussing some of those strategies and how we can do them both legally and also balancing public safety in our communities as well.
Absolutely, safely. Excellent. That's very promising news. Thanks for that. With regard to use of force incidents and how they are reported, and we've heard a lot of concern expressed over time with regard to retaliation. And as we've heard about the culture shift, can you talk to me about what's been done to address any of the potential fears of retaliation in, again, in the reporting of use of force events?
Sure. Well, to put it quite bluntly, retaliation is against policy. So that's something that starts off once a new deputy sheriff or custody assistant comes out of the the respective academies. For the deputies, they go through a six week jail operations course where they begin to be trained on our use of force policies as well as retaliation. That continues through the course of their time in custody division. And of course, if we recognize it or see it, we take appropriate action. And that may include disciplinary action. Then there's also means for individuals in our custody to report that type of behavior if it's happening, either through the inmate complaint process or to the OIG or to supervisors or any number of means that they can report that type of behavior. But it's not tolerated.
I appreciate that. And just my last question, Madam Chair. Mr. Huntsman referenced a section of the report that he suggested we pay attention to. And in fact, it is one that 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 caught our eye with regard to the equity or lack thereof in job participation. And so I'm curious, what's the timeline for addressing the lack, the racial disparities in employment through the prison personnel office? And hopefully develop in a system that documents reasons for denial of employment? Do you have a timeline or a strategy?
No, thank you for that. And the key there is a a system to document that. So we are looking currently at software that we currently do not have, but we plan on utilizing to document those. So to back up, every individual that comes into our custody that qualifies is given the opportunity either for for work opportunities or education based programs. Where we failed, and and I appreciate the report highlighting this, is that when they refuse, because these are voluntary programs. So when they refused, we didn't have a mechanism in place to document those refusals and the reasons for the refusals. So that's where technology, software that will allow us to track those refusals and why. And then go back and recontact those individuals because it's not uncommon for someone to refuse at intake, but then later on change their mind for any number of reasons. So we have to do a better job of tracking those.
And do you think it it is simply a system of tracking? Is it messaging? Is it the process by which people are asked? I'm just curious.
I think it's all.
If there are other barriers?
Sure.
Since the disparities are so blaring?
So one of the things that was mentioned in the report is their charges. So there are disqualifying charges. Assault charges are disqualifier. Certain medical conditions, mental health conditions are disqualifiers. So what the report highlighted is that African American female inmates were more disproportionately arrested for assault charges. And that was one of the disqualifiers. However, again, I think we need to do a better job of looking at that. There are times when there are in our custody that certain charges may be dropped. And then we can reassess as to whether or not they qualify at a later time. So those are all strategies that we intend on employing.
I appreciate that because because we know our our system of charging isn't truly blind and is not without bias. So that's very helpful that that additional kind of evaluation and consideration will be made. Again, Happy New Year and it's good to see you. And thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell. Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have four questions. Much has been covered already. First, with regard to complaints in the OIG office, what is your process when you receive complaints? Do you investigate the complaints directly? Do you provide updates or outcomes to members of the public who file complaints? Can you tell me your process around that?
Under our ordinance and state law, most complaints are referred back to the Sheriff's Department and they investigate. There's a variety of kinds. One of the first things we do in the Office of Inspector General is we learn what the desire is of the person contacting us. We don't have the staff to directly, and most people would prefer the Sheriff's Department not investigate itself. But by law, it does, and we're not empowered to overrule that. So we explain that to people and ask them if they want us to refer to the Sheriff's Department. Usually, they do because they want something done. But as has been pointed out, there's a fear of retaliation, for instance, when they're in custody. So if they want to remain anonymous, then we honor that as best we can. Usually, we can completely. But then we can't investigate as effectively. So sometimes we use the information they provide us in order to, say, work on a report or to identify a problem that we can then go roundabout a different way to solve. So I might send an inspector down to the jail to just find out whether or not inmates are getting showers, when I know perfectly well a particular inmate didn't get a shower. And that way, I'm not disclosing confidential information, but still hopefully addressing the problem. So we have a variety of tools we use to try to give as much assistance as we can to people. But we are not a replacement for the sheriff's investigative function, either criminally by law or even internally by ordinance and policy, because what we really are is an oversight mechanism to see whether or not they're doing their job. But of course, that's all pretty complicated, and the public doesn't always know it. Because so we try to work with them to explain to them the way the rules are and what we can do for them and what we can't do for them.
Okay, thank you. Second topic is the cause of death findings. They're based on preliminary findings, as I understand it. There seems to be a lot of deaths that are initially determined to be of natural causes. And so I wanted to kind of understand who makes that determination? How is a death from natural causes distinguished from other types of deaths, such as deaths that are found to be caused by COVID or overdose or some other issue? Are natural causes deaths further broken down to a more specific cause of death? Can you talk a little bit about how you report that and how those are analyzed?
My office does some very preliminary reporting simply to call to the public and the and the board's attention the fact that the deaths are occurring and that they need to be looked into. We don't ultimately report on the the general findings. That's something that we believe the Sheriff's Department should do to answer your.